Welcome to the February 24th, 2011, meeting of the Planning Board. I'm Alex Whiteside. I've had a little surgery, so I've -- this is not the usual appearance. And any of that with me?
Bernie Lynch, member.
Emily Ennis, member.
Duffy, member.
Peter Jackson, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Diane Coligan, secretary.
Okay. Let's -- we've got to have some proposed minutes. Let's send Diane any changes that we have, and we'll be ready to go for next meeting. All right, our next meeting's next week.
Yes.
On March 3rd. Secretary Thursday.
Where?
Where?
Yeah, where? Where are we going to be?
Third. Isn't the third COA? Third's at the Council on Aging.
COA.
And the 10th?
Here. The 24th is here as well.
What are we doing on the 10th?
I'm waiting to hear from you.
We may do nothing. We will discuss this next week.
Okay.
Whether or not we need to make three weeks in a row.
We've got so much on our plate. We do have to do the public hearing for the article in front of the town meeting.
Okay, now, on that article, do you want me to revise it so that we get it all compressed into a lump? In other words, throw what we did last time into it also?
You're talking about the accessory height?
Yes.
We already submitted language.
Yeah, I think you said that.
The language is what it is.
I understand that, but I understood there might be a problem with the Attorney General. Have we straightened that out?
Yes, I'm doing that right now with Mr. Mullin.
All right. Once -- as long as that's straightened out, we're...
All right, now I understand where we're going. The problem that we had with the district attorney -- no, Attorney General this time, was when we had our public hearing for that, I put it in the paper twice, but I didn't put it in two consecutive weeks.
Okay.
Because the holiday was in there, I felt I'd get more people if I spaced it out, and you can't do that.
It has to be the two consecutive weeks.
It has to be consecutive weeks. I put it in on the 1st and the 15th of July. It had to be either the 7th and the 15th or the 1st and the 7th.
Okay.
Okay, so what I will do is I will simply fold what we did at that special town meeting into the -- into what we do at this meeting.
Okay.
And so that we'll have passed it twice, but it will have got advertised on two consecutive weeks.
Okay. And do we have enough time to get it in for our meeting on the 24th? Do we have enough advertising time? We should.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay.
Because I think they go to press right at that time, so we'll be just coming in under the deadline. It's early this year because town meeting is early.
I can't do what you just said. I can put in the language for what we just passed. A different -- it's a document form 299. It has to be put in the paper by the town clerk. That goes in once. So that will go in, and our article will be in there also, so we can cover both.
When is that going in?
I'll talk to Jimmy tomorrow, so probably next week.
Well, I mean, we can put the original article. We can combine it, and I mean, it's just one extra section. There are currently three sections. We'd have four sections.
Okay, but I don't know that we can do that because we've already submitted the language for the article to the selectmen, and it was fairly specific. So if you add another section, is it -- would it be considered outside of the scope of what we've already submitted? What do you need to do?
Well, I mean, we were going to say so that the article reads, and the article was going to read what was passed at the last -- at the last...
Annual?
At the last special.
Okay, so you want to put that in plus what we put in for the selectmen for this upcoming annual town meeting?
What I wanted to is at the special, we passed zoning that said, "In a rear setback area, can't be more than -- accessory buildings can't be more than 22 feet high."
Okay.
Attorney General has some sort of problem with the advertising.
Right.
So the obvious solution is to simply stick it back in the article that assumes it's already there. I mean, there's an assumption, implicit assumption in the article, that that's there, and if it isn't there...
That it makes head patch of the article, okay.
I think that we can do it, Bill. I will...
I understand.
We will...
I understand.
We're going to work on this.
I think it makes sense to do that, but if there is a legal reason, it won't work, I guess.
If there is, there is.
But it makes all the sense in the world for the town meeting members to understand the article is to have it completed.
Right. And as long as we can get it advertised for the 24th.
Right.
Okay. So that would be the 24th.
Yeah.
The 10th is still...
I haven't talked to Tim.
I would think that we might make the 10th a tentative meeting, depending on need.
Okay. We can evaluate it after today and then after next week's meeting.
Okay.
I think that Mr. Conley has a problem with the 3rd.
He has. Now he has a problem with the 3rd.
He's on vacation. Just before he left, he said he was trying to get Mr. Akerson to come in.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it was his expectation to have him here. He said he thought Mr. Akerson was having a problem getting here on the 3rd.
Really?
I will let you know...
He riding a log down a river?
Good question.
No, that would be Mr. Lyges.
No, that twinge would be riding a log down a river.
I've had lots of phone calls about Mr. Lyges's presentation, and everybody liked it. I think even Mr. Conley liked it. He didn't like the outcome, but he liked the presentation.
It was. It was a good presentation.
It was.
Yes, and I think a lot of people learned.
And it said a lot of nice things about the town, and we probably, you know, as a...
That's always nice.
What?
Well, that's always nice to hear nice things about the town.
It is always nice.
Our tourism commission for you, I like that.
To say it's like being at rural Vermont is, it seems to be... All right. We keep hoping citizens will show up to speak, but let's... Any citizens out there want to speak on anything tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. What we're going to have to do is hear from the town planner, and then we're going to discuss a personnel matter.
I've been dealing an awful lot with wind turbine permitting issues and the court case that's coming for -- brought forth by Quarry Hills for the wind turbine. Dealing with the home program, dealing with how we can deal with the money coming in from the home program, dealing with the planning board applications that are coming, the different paperwork, getting the legal ads, legal ads for a couple of new telephone poles for some wireless telecommunications stuff, and just dealing with developers on future projects that -- trying to figure out what they're supposed to be filing, working with them on the wording.
Anything that's likely to come before us?
One thing.
You don't have to say what they are. Do we have stuff coming up?
People make it a surprise.
Yeah, you can make it a surprise.
There's one big one that's not coming to you.
Right.
It'll go right to zoning board.
Is that the one on Milton Hill?
No, that's -- that's going to ZBA too. No, it's on Randolph Ave.
Where the St. Elizabeth Rectory is?
No, next door.
No, that's coming to ZBA too, but that's a smaller one compared to the one on the old subdivision.
It used to be that people would think that they need to amend the zoning to do projects, but now they just seem to say, "Well, get a variance."
Merishwood Drive. They all know Merishwood Drive, how easy it is to go to the Board of Appeals instead of the planning board. They did a subdivision on Merishwood Drive.
We've been a couple that have come in front of us.
You weren't on the board then.
Well, there was a -- recently, they had a -- maybe you can tell us, Diane, what occurred when they -- the people came in for a variance on height and number of stories. What did the board determine to do there?
From the other night on Heather Drive?
Yeah.
And they continued it.
Also continued at that same meeting was 17 Cantonah, and there continued out until sometime in April.
I know at this point, the March 14th, but I was told that they might ask for additional continuance.
Later.
Our continuance probably should march in. Well, I think we...
We're a step ahead of the zoning board.
That's fine.
But they met with the -- the development team met with the neighbors Monday night.
22nd.
Monday night, so...
Good. That's progress, that they met with the neighbors.
Yes.
All right, well, it does seem to me that on these developments, the planning board probably should weigh in with a view as to the proposal.
I second that.
Okay, so we will...
Keep ourselves informed.
We will keep ourselves informed, and you will keep us informed.
Actually, I have one more for you. Governor Stoughton, RFP, is out. The responses I do back to the town, the 25th of March, the pre-conference meeting for that is Monday the first. Follow-up to it is Wednesday the second. That's site visit on each day, a question and answer period on Tuesday.
I saw that you had it in the Times.
The ad is in the Times. It's in Bankers in Trade, and it's in the New England Real Estate Journal. It's on the State Central Register.
March 1st.
And the RFP itself is on the homepage -- the town's homepage, right on the front page.
Next week.
Okay. Anything else? That's it? That's it for now? I talked to Kevin Murn, and he said that he didn't think that the planning board needed to count employees at its meetings, and he suggested that Bill should be able to take notes of the meeting and give them to Diane without Diane being here. And he requested that I bring this to the attention of the board.
And what was your response?
My response was that I would bring it to the attention of the board, and that I understood his -- I understood the thrust of what he was saying, which was this offer of an opportunity to save some money. So what does the board think?
I think Diane could watch the television during the business hours and take the notes down and get paid for it.
You're not paid overtime, correct? You're paid -- your hours are whenever your hours are, so whether you're here watching the meetings or during business hours watching the meetings, you're still charged for the same hours, correct?
I think it's more difficult to try to glean it from the TV than as being here. I think it's much easier to do it here because you have all the ambiance shifts and so on. You wouldn't get that on the TV, so I think we'd better have you here for the board. How many hours do we have? Two and a half to three hours, probably?
Depending.
Per meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, three hours most, at most.
And we have a certain number of hours for you built into the budget.
12 hours.
12 hours, yeah, and of course, Bill is actually under the selectmen's budget rather than ours. Diane is under our budget, and therefore, under our jurisdiction. Bill is actually under the selectmen's budget.
Diane covers the Board of Appeals also. Are you under their budget for that?
No, I'm under the Board of Appeals, not under the selectmen.
So you're under the Board of Appeals when you deal with them, and you're under the planning board when you deal with us?
That's correct.
And will the change be made in the Board of Appeals too, or just the planning board?
No, the Board of Appeals will stay the same.
I think we should stay the same too. Do the same kind of work. It should stay the same.
I think perhaps Mr. Murn is forgetting that they actually fulfill two separate roles, that Diane is our clerk and does certain things as that position, and Bill is the town planner and provides certain advice and information to us under that position. And in fact, the ability to provide that advice and take notes is actually rather difficult. You need somebody who's able to concentrate fully on the meeting in order to take notes, as opposed to half of your attention being on taking the notes and the other half on responding to questions or gleaning information as they come up.
Yes.
I'd just like to say, I come up here often during the week on different matters, and Bill and Diane work together, and there's no counting of if it's ZBA work or if it's -- whatever work it is, they just get it done together. And to have her not here seems to be a very difficult way to go about business. So she has to be here to get the feeling for next week how to deal with Bill and what the various things are on the agenda, so I would say we need her as much as the zoning board of appeals needs her. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Diane, is there a problem with you completing your work within your allotted hours now? Is that why they want to take these hours and get them somewhere else?
From what I understand was that they felt that I would be more useful during the day, working in the office, helping Bill rather than spending two and a half, three hours in a night day.
Every other week.
That was my understanding.
Every other week, Jesus.
So there is more work that could be done in the office if Diane's time was available there?
Yeah.
You still get the same salary?
Yes.
So what do you want to do?
Well...
It's not my decision.
At the pleasure of the board.
Well, we'd like to hear input too from a very valuable employee.
I mean, I do have two thoughts. I mean, I think it -- if indeed it came to pass that this kind of thing had to happen, I guess it would mean that the secretary would have to produce the first draft of the notes, you know, based on the conversation. So the secretary would take notes and then turn them into a draft that started the notes as opposed to Diane doing it, and that puts an extra burden on somebody here who's trying to participate in the discussion and all those kind of things. I do know that at one time, it was suggested that maybe Bill shouldn't attend these meetings, and that was going to be the cost, the time savings and things like that. And, you know, my thought was always that that, you know, wouldn't be right because we need Bill to have a handle on what's going on with all our proceedings and fill us in on, you know, some of the background and the things that have happened to gotten -- get to that point. So I was very much opposed to the notion of Bill not attending our meetings. You know, I think the way it is now, it's working fine, so why mess it up? But if push came to shove, you know, and we had to do something differently, I would -- I would want to keep Bill here for the meetings if we had to adjust and find another way to work with Diane. But if indeed she had to listen to the tapes or watch the tape of this meeting in order to create the notes, that's the same amount of time anyway, so there's no cost savings there.
And no time savings.
And no time savings because the same amount of time we're in the meeting here, she would be spending doing, you know, going through those anyway, so I don't see that there's savings to be had.
Yeah, at the moment, I don't see that. I don't see the savings to be had either. I think they both provide -- equally provide valuable functions to this board, and I would really hate to lose either one of them. If there's ever a time when you feel that you're not having enough hours to get all the work done, and, you know, the two of you come to us with a question as to how better to adjust, that might be another matter. But if there's no evidence suggesting that so far, then I think it's best to have both of you attend the meetings for the services that you specifically each provide to us and therefore to the town.
I suppose that my feeling is that if there is three and a half hours worth of work, two and a half hours, however much that could be done in the office, that might be a useful thing to have, and that I don't see that... I mean, it seems to me that getting the minutes out is something that we should be able to do.
We could take turns.
We could. But I mean, I do think that Bill takes notes of what occurs. Do you take notes of what occurs?
Usually.
And...
But not while you're speaking, I'm taking it.
No.
But, you know, it is -- these don't have to be verbatim transcripts. These, like I -- I mean, Pete just expanded the item number six as he was sitting over there. He didn't need to...
Pete takes excellent notes. I don't know if you've noticed. Pete takes fantastic notes.
You see, this is -- he could take a permanent secretary.
I'm sure he really loves it.
He takes minutes. I take notes.
I think I take straws, judging by when I look back at them.
It's mine.
Yeah.
Well, I can report to Kevin that we prefer to keep things the way they are.
Well, you know, but we would be open to be revising.
You can report to Kevin and see what he has to say. I have a feeling -- I have a feeling that I know his point of view.
Well, you know, there is one other solution. We could be far more efficient with our meetings.
Amen.
That would be a lot of time for that.
Amen.
We could be far more efficient with the meetings.
Yes.
You mean, have them compressed into an hour?
No, I was just thinking that rather than, you know, shooting the breeze about whether or not Diane's spending too many hours taking notes, we could...
Well, there is -- you have to remember, we've got a seven o'clock hearing.
Or we could schedule our hearings slightly earlier times within the meetings.
My question, Mr. Chairman, is why have these developers come here like eight and 10 times? They're required to bring certain information. Why can't we act on it one night or two nights? Why do they have to keep coming back?
The way I see it is that when you come in...
They're not coming to the...
When you come in with an application that is in total disorder...
Well, they shouldn't be coming in.
I understand they shouldn't be coming in, but they want to come in.
Well, they shouldn't be coming in.
And we have to tell them it's in total disorder, and then they, you know, begrudgingly make some changes, and then we have to say, you know, it's still in total disorder, and this takes time. And that's only some developers. Other developers come in with good plans as to what they want to build, but we don't see it quite the same way.
When's the last time we had that? 88 Wash Street, we had like 15 hearings?
Yeah, because they came in with what they wanted to do, and there was a lot of public comment on this, and the public is entitled. The reason we have a public hearing is to get the public's input, and once we got the input, you know, we thought that the public, what they said had merit, and the developer had to address it.
We have our planning board rules and regs. They should read that before they come in, and someone should...
The rules and regs...
And then the testimony might develop something, but you don't need 10 hearings.
We don't want any more hearings than are necessary. I mean, I certainly don't relish extra hearings. Yes.
You recall, the architect for 88 Wash Street said the final design benefited greatly by the number of meetings. Am I correct?
He did.
Thank you.
Non-reachable hours for him.
Well, don't forget too that quite often, the public hearings raise questions that nobody thought of, whether the developer...
Maybe you have the second public.
But what happens is that sometimes, you know, there are more and more questions depending on the evidence that's brought up to us.
We're straying off the mark here.
In fact, we're being inefficient.
Where what?
Being inefficient.
In what?
In straying off the mark.
It's now killing us at seven.
Well, Ed gave us an article. He might want to speak about his article.
It speaks for itself. It was in tonight's ledger.
That's not killing the two minutes, Ed.
I don't have my own copies.
Here, here, you can look them up.
It's the editorial in tonight's ledger. The town needs to sit down with opponents and begin building the relationships that should have been established earlier in the process.
Of which process? The public can't see the...
You can...
Of the wind turbine.
Oh, it's on the wind turbine with Quarry Hill, but it's in tonight's ledger.
Okay.
Yep. And is anybody going to this?
I urge everyone to go to the conference.
Planner Training Collaborative?
March 19th.
Just don't sit at the same table, or we'll post it.
March 19th at Holy Cross.
Yep.
Citizen.
It's a good program.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a definitive subdivision plan at 683 to 685 Brush Hill Road, and it's been duly advertised to start at 7:00. And it's now 7:00, and we will hear from the applicant. Can it be turned off?
If you can turn it on.
How did you do that? Well, why don't you move up a little further also? All right, if you begin not to hear, you can come forward. It's sort of like being in church.
Want to set it up there?
Set it up down there, right where that...
Mr. Meekel?
Yeah, right where the TV camera can see it.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield. I represent the owner and also the developer on 683 to 685 Brush Hill Road.
Who's the owner and who's the developer?
The developer is Anthony Roschito, and he's here tonight, and the owner is the estate of...
Margaret Boyle.
Margaret Boyle.
And how do you -- what's that Anthony -- spell the last name, would you?
I can.
R-I-S...
R-U-S-C-I-T-O.
C-I-T-O.
Anthony's sitting right here. He can...
He can spell his... Okay, good.
Some months ago, we came with a preliminary subdivision plan, and we had a number of discussions before the planning board, and also a number of meeting with the neighbors. And as a result of it, of those meetings, I think we've come with a definitive plan that is improved, better for the neighborhood, and provides for the savings of some specimen trees as well as some other trees, adds additional buffer, and I want to recognize Jim Burke of the Sal Burke Associates to go over the plan with you.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening again. My name is Jim Burke. I'm with the Sal Burke Associates, and I'm a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Mass. And we finally filed a definitive subdivision for a development that the board has seen and helped foster. We're looking at... We're looking at five lots on a, on a 500-foot-long road. The lots themselves do not, need all zoning requirements. The road, however, does not meet several of the planning board's requirements, ranging from handicap ramps to more specifically to road construction, one-side sidewalks, sloped granite edging, a 10 percent grade as opposed to the maximum allowed, 8 percent, all of which has been, gone over with the DPW and, you know, preliminarily approved, otherwise we wouldn't be here tonight with a definitive application. The waivers, specifically the ones related to grading and layout with regards to the road being within an easement, allow for the saving of a 120-inch beech tree, along with, you know, some, some good-sized maples as well. As far as utilities go, the sore itself is down at Fairmont, about 500 feet below the proposed intersection of the Brushhill Road and this development, so we'll be extending that sore up the street and terminating at a manhole and coming on site with that particular sore. There's an existing 10-inch water main in Brushhill Road, that will be tapped, and an 8-inch line extended up the roadway to service the five proposed homes, along with a hydrant at the end of it. Drainage is all underground, is designed in a stepped manner. There are three sets of catch basins that collect the stormwater from both the roadway as well as the front yards that collect and distribute the stormwater to underground rechargeers. There's basically an arched plastic chamber that's fairly popular these days.
Are there three of them?
Three, three sets of six, six catch basins total, all of which have their own underground recharge systems attached there, too. And each one has an overflow system that will allow large storm events to buy, you know, fill up the underground detention basins, if you will, and overflow into the town system. So, hard green, sore. There is existing gas in the street, so we're looking to extend that as well. We talked to the utility planners about that, as well as there's overhead power on Brushhill Road, and we're proposing to bring it underground to service the proposed homes. There is a retaining wall on one side of the, the proposed roadway to further protect the tree that allows to lessen the cut, specifically right around that beech tree. And I'd say that gives you an idea of what we're proposing, and I'd open it up to the board if you have any questions.
The existing lot, they can tie into your street. Can the existing lot on the corner of Brushhill Road tie into the street?
Well, you know, I haven't had, haven't been privy to any sort of communications with it.
Well, you don't have a retaining wall with it?
There is no retaining wall in front of that particular house. I did do a quick design for a driveway, just in anticipation of that happening.
Yeah.
You'll look, I did a, it's probably 130 feet long at 8 percent, so it cranks up pretty good, but you can get there.
Okay, well, that was, that was something you were instructed to do.
Yeah, there was, the driveway I proposed, there's garages right here, and I kind of looped it, I made it as long as I could, assuming that the grade is high. We're at about 115 feet here, and we're, I'm sorry, 215, I almost said, we're at 208, where I proposed the cut. But there are other alternatives as well, I mean, depending on how this particular lot is, you might be able to do a common drive from all the way up top and even lessen the grade and limit the amount of curve cuts into the proposed street. I mean, until discussions proceed, it's really hard for us to come up with a design.
Oddly, Tree, you've, you have a, we've been dealing with arborist recently.
I've heard.
And do you have a solid arborist opinion that what you're doing is the right thing?
There is an arborist opinion that was submitted during the preliminary filings, and we stand by on that. The arborists basically said the tree needs some pruning, but several years of life left.
And as far as the root structure is concerned, what you've left is what?
We are totally, all the cut is outside of the canopy. I'm told that that's the correct methodology of protecting that tree.
That seems to be what we've been told, too.
I tend to listen.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, I guess. What does the board, what questions do they have? Yes?
Jim, the location of the hydrant, did you check, did you check with the fire department on it?
I have not yet. In this particular case, you know, with Brushhill being so high above Brushhill Road itself, placing a hydrant in a particular location, you want it right at the end of the main, as it would not only act as a fire protection for the area, it also would act as a nice little blow-off for the DPW release.
I would check with the fire chief.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Now, you will check with the fire chief on the fire system, whether or not he supports waiving the, the hand alarm?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Because we want to know his view on that. It is, and it seems to me there's also a requirement for a police alarm.
Correct.
And you could check with the police chief as to what the police chief thinks.
I, I look forward to comments from board of health, engineering, fire department, everyone involved, and we look forward to, you know, meeting their concerns.
Okay. Just, you should get after them because we do want to know what they, what they feel.
I certainly do.
Okay, yes.
When we last saw you, there was some discussion among this board, yourselves and the neighbors, and I'd like to know what steps you've taken to work with the neighbors after you left the first round of discussions with the board? How, how you responded to the comments that they made during this?
We responded with, with the buffers, as you'll see. The, the buffers on that are, are significant, so there is no build, no touch was added as a result of their suggestions. The saving of the trees was very important for the, for the neighbors. The minimum size of the road is what the neighbors preferred insofar as a larger roadway would be not in keeping with the, with the neighborhood as it is now. And the underground detention basins were specifically addressed to concern some of the neighbors' perceived problems with visible detention basins. So, we've made a lot of, of progress with the plan as a result of the neighborhood input.
And did you meet with the neighborhoods in between the last meeting here and this one, or is it just...
We discussed it, and we had a conversation with some of the neighbors, and they did not feel that another meeting would be necessary or productive.
Okay, thank you.
What about...
But we did communicate and, and offer to have additional meetings.
How, how did you determine what to do with the house?
With the house?
There's a house on it. There's a house on this lot.
In fact, there's two. There's a house in the carriage.
There's a house in the carriage house, both of which are slated for demolition in the plan, and how did you determine to demolish rather than rehabilitate?
We looked at the potential cost of rehabilitation, and we concluded that if we rehabilitated the main house, it would have to be a multimillion-dollar house, and we contacted realtors in this regard, and they felt that that was unlikely to be saleable in this particular market, and that they would anticipate that it would be on the market for at least a year or more before any sale could be consummated. With that, we determined alternative use for the, for the land, and that's consistent with the plan that we've submitted to you.
All right, you want to say something?
Oh, yeah. They didn't meet with the neighbors, I met with the neighbors a couple times at multiple discussions.
Introduce yourself again.
My name is Anthony Roschito, I'm a part of the development team for the project. I did meet with the neighbors, I can't remember how many times, we've met up a lot, but I'm not sure if it was before the last meeting, but I know we definitely met after the last meeting. I don't know how many times exactly. We've been in contact at least half a dozen times. We've listened to their recommendations, and we've implemented some of them here in this plan, trying to make everything work.
And you say the development team, would you, would you, who's the development team?
My family, my brother, Aldo Roschito, myself, and we have a partner, Bill Payton.
And have you been in the business for a while?
Well, I'm too young to have been in the business for that long, but I've been in the business my whole life. Third-generation builder, my grandfather, my father, my brother, myself. William Payton, the other part of the development team, has been a major developer in the city for over 30 years, in the city of Boston, has built a lot of the tops of the buildings you see from Milton, he's developed a lot of those, and so it's, we feel it's a great team.
All right, other questions from the board? Then, why don't you leave space for the public, and we'll see what they have to say? Who wants to be heard on this, on this application? And if you have questions for the development, the developers, you can ask them.
Would you like these before, about whether we can...
Depends what they are.
That's a good point. I'm hoping there's a draft outline of your, your recommendations.
Ooh, me, too.
I have a couple, we might not actually have enough.
Hi, my name is John McDonald, I live at 704 Brushhill Road, member of the Brushhill Neighborhood Association. Before I begin, I just would like to say that first, I'd like to thank the neighbors, butters, and members of the association that have put in so much time as we've worked up to this point, and I think a successful example of community effort, cooperation between not only the planning board, the neighborhood, and the development team. I would point out that, from my perspective, the development teams have been extremely cooperative in listening to the concerns that we've expressed and have adopted a number of the items that we've specifically asked them to adopt. It's never 100 percent, but having dealt with other development teams in the past, I must say I thought this was a good process. Their team, the engineer, Bob Sheffield, who I like and trust, Anthony Roschito and his family have really, I think, gone out of their way. Also, Tim Kernan, who's on the executive board of the Neighborhood Association, with tremendous amount of work in putting these documents together, and other members of the association and neighbors for the research they've done, as we've tried to reach this point. And again, I said it before, I'll say it again, a special thanks to you, because I know this could have been viewed as another subdivision proposal that would have gone right through the process, and you took a great deal of time and energy to look at other options for the site that might have been an improvement over a traditional development plan, and in doing so created a great deal more work for yourselves. But I know the intent was to do the best thing for the neighborhood, and that is appreciated and did not go unnoticed, so thank you. What we propose this evening is not dramatically different from the general outline or concepts we've most recently suggested, but are now very specific recommendations that we believe critical to improving this current proposal. With the adoption of these recommended conditions and modifications, we can, we can support this development plan. This evening, we asked the developer and the planning board to endorse our recommendations. We conducted site visits to subdivisions in this and other towns, some of which are located in similar historic districts, others in rural areas. In addition, did research to determine optimal road curving, lighting, and grading to help form our recommendations. In most of these areas, we support our position with studies and reports from the Commonwealth, other towns, or experts in planning. I don't know if you remember receiving, but I had dropped off a copy of the Pioneer Institute. I mentioned it hesitantly, I like the work they do on urban planning, some of their other opinions might not be as, anyway. But that was where a lot of this material, they had quoted the Mass Highway Department's study on road grade, they had provided information on other towns in the area. I did not have, I did not bring a copy that was to be the addendum this evening, so I apologize for that, and be able to drop off copies tomorrow. Tonight, we focus on three specific categories we believe important to providing protection to the neighborhood. Landscaping, infrastructure, and building design review. It's our opinion that at this point in the process, after many concepts and plans, we have a fairly good idea of what this is going to look like. And in spite of the limitations on our ability to control the future of this site as, as a result of what is allowed under current zoning regulations, many improvements to the plan have been made. Yet, it will be the planning board's decision on most of the remaining details that will ultimately determine to what extent we all have actually succeeded or failed in our efforts to create the best possible development on this historic site. It's a little bit of a turnaround, and I'll explain why I think that, or we think that. As we've repeatedly said, this area has important historic designation, National Trust Historic District. Almost all the houses surrounding the site are historic, including three across the street, one dating from 1670, two from 1810, and the one next door from 1799. Others in the historic district are current and not deemed historic, but for some reason, this particular site has a very high density of significant, important architectural building, architectural examples of historic buildings. In addition, it's also an area that is really truly rural in nature, which is different from other areas in town. Historic and beautiful grounds of the property have been of great concern from the outset, and although the years have certainly brought change to this sacred parcel, they have not in any way reduced the beauty and grandeur of the ancient tree, sloping meadow, rising from Brushhill Road, or the gently curving drive with mature trees on either side, starting at a beautifully crafted stone wall. Within the limits of the options available to us, it became clear during this process that by adopting sensitive planning criteria, we have the opportunity, with the support of the planning board, to reduce the impact of this development on the neighbors, the rural landscape in this district. Although dramatic changes will be made, the potential for the town requiring overly aggressive engineering of the proposed new roadway, site grade, and other hardscape will cause significant additional damage to the grounds. We feel strongly that the single most important means to reduce the impact of this development will be a decision by the planning board to minimize the impact of the infrastructure on this site. The basis for our recommendations, the road, a small way serving only five houses, perhaps depending on negotiation, six, should not require a needlessly oversized swath of asphalt. In this rural historic district, the narrowest possible road will make for better development and reduce the negative impact on the surrounding historic streetscape. The board, by acting boldly, and perhaps against convention, but certainly within their authority and with the precedent of established standards used in other towns, should set the width of the road at no more than 18 feet. To provide some context for this recommendation, Rosie Carr and Henry Carr, Brushhill Road, and both in the audience this evening, recently measured the width of several roads near six eighty-five Brushhill. six eighty-five Brushhill Road. Bradley Road, I assume most people are familiar with them, but if not, let me know and I'd sort of give them context, which is a fairly major through street running from Blue Hill Avenue as an extension of Atherton to Brushhill Road where it becomes Williams Street is twenty foot wide. Nearby Brushhill Lane, a private road with no outlet satisfactorily serving approximately eight homes, is only sixteen feet wide. Fairmount Avenue, another major road running to Cummings Highway, is twenty-one feet wide. Williams Street is twenty feet wide. Low Circle with substantially more houses and traffic than proposed at this site has a twenty foot wide road. And Brushhill Road itself, a major street with steady traffic, is twenty-three feet wide. So when we've talked about twenty-two foot wide roads going up a hill, I think you might get a sense of what that would look like in context of the roads. And these roads are all one after another from the site up and down the street. It seems inappropriate that this small lane need exceed or match the width of these surrounding main roads. There is a growing recognition among municipalities that wherever possible, narrow roads are better for the environment, better aesthetically, and safer than the oversized roads of the past. I've said this, but I recently delivered a part of a white paper from the Pioneer Institute listing many area town road with requirements. Now, granted there are towns that insist on oversized roads, but they should not be used as standard. The Pioneer Institute white paper provides examples of twenty towns that require no more than twenty-two feet of pavement and more importantly, shows eighteen towns of those twenty-two in circumstances not unlike the one we're facing at six eighty-five Brushhill Road that allow considerably less than twenty-two foot road width. The reduction in width is based on type of road and/or the number of houses serviced by the road. Now, these are just three examples, the document I delivered cites others and we'd be more than happy to get additional. Canton requires twenty-two feet road width for a residential street, but only eighteen feet for a residential lane. Duxbury allows eighteen foot roads for four to ten house lots and Marshfield allows eighteen foot roads for eight or fewer lots. Other towns cited in this white paper require only fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, or twenty foot roads for smaller roads described as lane, minor, or limited residential, et cetera. Road grade, the existing grade was established according to the Historical Commission by the Olmsted Brothers, is an integral part of this historic landscape, it has a strong opinion and one supported by the Mass Highway Department's two thousand and six project development design guide, that the existing grade is more than appropriate and safe for the proposed subdivision. That report is quoted in part in the white paper that I had delivered and can make additional copies available. The Commonwealth's guidelines allow for a grade of eleven percent to twelve percent for suburban roads with speed limits from fifteen miles an hour to thirty miles an hour. Unnecessary excavations and the required retaining walls, particularly at the end of the road, one of the most critical view sightlines, would be extremely damaging. So we urge the planning board and the town engineer to preserve the existing landscape slope as designed by the Olmsted Brothers. The lack of any design review protection afforded historic districts or any neighborhood in this and many other towns is a severe problem. In this case, in similar situation certain to arise in the future, this lack of regulatory protection has placed severe limitations on the ability of neighborhood residents, the planning board, and Historical Commission to adequately protect historic districts. Until we adopt specific design criteria, each new development or building within these nationally recognized historic districts has the potential to create irreversible damage to the character of the district and undermine the National Trust designation. This next section is some thoughts we had on ideas for reviewing regulations and perhaps adopting some new ones. In the coming months, we hope to work with this board and the Historical Commission to help establish design review standards for the town, if that's of interest. From this experience and from previous experiences that I've had, there's a recognition that the Commonwealth's demolition delay bylaw, although having some benefit, is not an actual mechanism to preserve historic buildings. At the state, town, and neighborhood level, there needs to be serious discussion leading to remedies that will prevent the continuing destruction of this region's historic buildings, many of which are in fine condition. I'm writing an article for a real estate magazine and doing research, have noted that house after house that dates pre eighteen twenties oftentimes referred to as a teardown in the marketing material, simply because people don't understand old buildings and don't have an appreciation for them to the extent I think they should have, anyway. So the demolition delay bylaws, you see just delays the inevitable. The only buildings that are occasionally saved in this process are post and beam buildings that are dismantled. It's almost impossible to move a structure these days because of the extreme costs involved. And when they're dismantled, basically they're put in a trailer truck and sold to someone on the North Shore for a family room. It's not what we, I would think would be the future the buildings deserve. Next, the planning board should consider allowing preliminary submissions to be more informal and less expensive. This may reduce the tendency for developers to remain fundamentally committed to the concept of the original plan due to the expenses incurred in creating the more formal preliminary submission. And finally, under this section, the town should review existing side, front, and rear yard setback requirements and adjust them to better reflect their appropriates for the wide range of lot sizes in the town. For example, the same thirty foot rear yard setback applies to a seventy-five hundred square foot lot in a C district and to both the forty thousand square foot lot in an A district and the eighty thousand square foot lot in a double A district. The side yard setbacks for C district lots and double A lots hardly differ, ranging from a ten foot setback on a seventy-five hundred square foot lot to only a fifteen foot setback on the sideline of an eighty thousand square foot lot. Increasing the setback requirements on larger lots would provide protection for abutters and neighborhoods in general and provide the planning board with an important tool as it seeks to save future residential growth. And that was one of the concerns we had in this development and we were pleased that development team created a forty foot buffer of no build and a twenty foot buffer of no cut. But when you have an eighty thousand square foot lot and someone can build thirty feet from their neighbor on the back and fifteen feet on the side, it just doesn't seem, it just seems odd to me. The following are the specific conditions that we, I'll outline for our support for the project. And I will say that some of these have been discussed and the development team has agreed in principle, although as we go forward, we need to be, get more in writing and agree in a more formal way. First landscaping, I mentioned there were three areas, landscaping, the hardscape, and the design review. Landscaping, the entrance to the property is critically important, we believe, to retain the character at the front of this property. Developer will preserve and intact the existing wall entrance posts and maintain the existing driveway course for at least sixty feet from the stone wall at Brushhill Road. The existing trees on either side of the entrance will be preserved, as will trees on either side of the existing driveway. This will not only save several significant mature trees, but create a more attractive entrance to the development. The developers already agreed to a sixty foot protection buffer on Brushhill Road of a no cut zone, which is significant, we believe. Significant tree preservation, the site contains many significant trees in addition to the one that we've been focusing on, which is the cockerbeach, although a glorious tree. There are ancient sugar maples on this site supposedly planted by the Olmsted Brothers, large oaks, cedar, some beautiful cedar trees, and other varieties which if preserved will help minimize the impact of the development. Fortunately, because developers opted for public sewer instead of individual septic systems on the site, significantly more trees will be preserved. That's how I think you're able to see that green zone that extends beyond the twenty foot buffer zone, because with the septics, that would have had to have been cleared out. With the public sewer, they've been able to tell us that they'll work to preserve those trees and we're agreed, they've committed to work with us to identify those trees, tag them, and protect them. Now certainly, some will have to come out to put in a house or two, but I think that's significant. So the developer working with the neighborhood will identify the significant trees on the property and save them. In addition, the developer will take appropriate measures to protect the trees during constructing, during construction by erecting either stakes and tape or snow fencing in a circle ten feet in circumference around the base of the trees or under distance recommended by an arborist. Significant, as it relates to trees, is to be loosely defined as a healthy mature tree, not in the immediate location of a house site. Maintain the existing trees and shrubs, now these are the ones that are outside the twenty foot buffer zone. In addition to protection afforded the significant trees, indifferent from the significant specimen trees that dot the landscape. The developer has on the plan submitted at the last planning board meeting indicated that the existing trees and shrubs that extend beyond the designated protected zone will in almost all cases be preserved. This area needs to be flagged. Although we understand that future owners may change the landscape because this area will not be covenanted like the buffer zone, that it remains in place may encourage future owners to appreciate and continue to protect the existing trees. The buffer zone to provide privacy for abutters and create a more aesthetically pleasing landscape, the developer has identified a buffer zone around the perimeter of the property, which is to be permanently protected by covenants in the property deed. The buffer zone on the Brushhill frontage and running from Brushhill Road to the rear of the Chapman residence at seven oh three Brushhill Road will be at least sixty feet. We've agreed to sixty feet on Brushhill Road, we need to talk about a bit up the side because it's very prominent as one comes up Brushhill Road, up the hill, that corner for some reason is very prominent in any house there, would be extremely obvious, so we'd like to see that buffer extend up just a little bit. On all the other boundaries, the protected buffer zone will be twenty feet from the abutting property line. This area will be kept free of construction material, equipment, and debris in this protective buffer zone. No healthy trees can be cut or removed, the ground can be maintained, but no way shall any work negatively affect the intent to provide a privacy buffer for neighbors. The exact language of this covenant has not been determined. Effort, the developer's suggestion of forty foot no build zone from all of the abutters property line will also be incorporated in the protective covenants. In the areas where a sixty foot protective buffer zone is indicated, the sixty foot line will be set as the no build zone. And this is, I related to the setback requirements under current zoning, in this case, the developers voluntarily agreed to at least a ten foot addition to what's a requirement by the town. Infrastructure, road width, the references previously presented support our position that the roadway should be eighteen feet in width. Anything wider would be overwhelming and offensive, particularly where it will be very visible looking up from Brushhill Road and where even on a gentle slope, the perspective will visually exaggerate the actual width. The existing road grade should be maintained, preserving the Olmsted landscape slope. The existing grade is well within the Commonwealth's guidelines for appropriate suburban road grades. Curbing, it's our opinion there should be no curbing along the roadway. The elimination of the need for curbing will further reduce the visual impact of the new road. Curbing is unnecessary and several nearby roads are without it. A natural edge of grass meeting the new road will absorb water rather than accelerating the runoff and will be more in keeping with the natural landscape we seek to protect. Sidewalks, there should be no sidewalks along either side of this new road because they're not needed. It's interesting to note that any sidewalk will lead to Brushhill Road where there are no sidewalks. Again, we are discussing a small development that is basically two houses deep. Any required hardscape will greatly exaggerate the visual impact of the development and its overall appearance. We are dealing with a relatively rural area and we do not want to lose that unique and special quality as a result of the application of regulations appropriate to more developed neighborhoods. Retaining wall site work requiring the use of retaining walls is to be avoided by all means possible, that's one of the reasons we asked the grade to be maintained. In the event a wall is necessary, it will be faced with a local type stone approximating the look of the existing wall along Brushhill Road, cement interlocking blocks will not be used. The new streetscape will be left as natural as possible. Close constructed of stone or wood at the entrance to each driveway to be avoided. Trees will be planted along areas of the new road that not retain existing trees or shrubs. Light similar to those at Fletcher Steel Way and at the low estates should be used. The lighting should be as soft as required, reducing light pollution during the evening. Utilities will be underground. We support the proposal for drainage as presented by the developer. At the end of the new road will be a turnaround at the center circle to be landscaped with mature trees and shrubs and we seek the elimination of the rights of way to Brushhill Lane and Hyde Park. It's been a long sought objective of the neighborhood and it will, basically will serve no purpose in this new development. Design review, although the town does not have design review guidelines, we ask the development team to the extent possible to work not only with the neighborhood, but also with the planning board and the Historical Commission on creating general design guidelines for the homes to be built in this development. In building sites, and I think this is critically important and goes back to those setback requirements in the town, as part of the design review process, we're asking the developer to agree to place the new buildings in a way that does not infringe on neighbors as a result of inappropriate setbacks. Although the town allows close rear, front, and side yard setbacks in this district, we believe that not only for the protection of the neighborhood, but for the overall quality of this new development, the careful placing of the new homes on the site is critical. The developer will work with the neighbors and the planning board to create building envelopes on each lot to be drawn on the plans within which a house could be located. And in conclusion, yes, we believe our recommendations designed to improve this proposed development and reduce its impact on our neighborhood are not only appropriate, but represent a forward-thinking approach to town planning and will result in a more thoughtful and better result. In addition to our other expressed concerns, this is an opportunity for the planning board to support the concept that many have come to recognize, we need to reduce our tendency to automatically and oftentimes unnecessarily overbuild our infrastructure. We urge the Milton Planning Board and the development team to endorse our recommendations as presented this evening. Thank you very much.
You gave this to the development team before tonight?
Gave it to them this evening and discussed. We've been discussing almost every item in this proposal with them on a fairly regular basis as we've met.
Well, it does seem to me that obviously this will require a response from the development team and we want to give them a chance to formulate their response. And so we'll hear what they have to say about that. What is Mr. Sheffield?
Well, I think many of the elements that he's suggesting are incorporated in the plan were discussed. There are other areas such as...
Why don't you come up some that we can have your words?
There are other areas such as the, we have proposed a twenty foot roadway whereas he's suggesting eighteen, if the planning board were to suggest an eighteen foot roadway would be placed with it, because that would have a minimum impact visually along the neighborhood, provided that was also approved by the DEP, by the highway department. Also, curbing is a requirement of the highway department and in this, in this case, we, you know, are going along with the requirements of the town. Do we think that the curbing is essential and necessary? I think that's a question mark, I think that there could be a small berm on the, on the side of the road, however, if that's a requirement that we have to live with, we'll put in the curbing that the town, the town requires.
If I could add just a little bit to that, one of the preliminary designs that we sat down with the DPW had, I believe it had a twelve percent grade to really minimize the cut up towards the tree. Sitting down with the DPW, they were pushing towards a minimum of twenty feet of pavement and curbing and ten percent. I'd say the biggest item for them was the ten percent. They wanted the vertical and, but with twenty feet wide, it really kind of closes you in, so we went towards the slope granite and that, given the grade, I would recommend putting the curbing in despite the cost my client...
If there were slope granite, would that be part... If there were slope granite, would that be part of the 20 feet? It could be part of the 20 feet.
It could be. It certainly could be. And honestly, I think we probably could go back and talk to DPW about the width. I think they'd be, they'd consider it. I think the Fire Department would have a comment or two about it as well. But I think that, I'd say the width is probably the most, is something that I think could probably be reduced.
Yeah, well, it's pretty, it's pretty close, 20, 18 and...
With the two, with the slope granite on either side? I mean, you certainly can ride up on top of that, set it in concrete, so...
I mean, the problem that I have without having a curb is, is the runoff and you get, you get gullying along the side of the road and it's, on Hillside Street where I live, the sides of the roads are a mess. For a number of reasons, but we love them that way.
You've actually hit on a major point because we're used to not having curbs and four sidewalks in that area for whatever reason. And it's part of that, the nature of the, as with Hillside, the nature of the district is such that it's more informal. And I was stunned to see the, I thought that Williams and Brushhill Road were much wider. So, when I saw 23 feet for Brushhill Road and 20 for Bradley, I was taken aback. And what concerned me was 20 feet going up for four houses, up a hill in a fairly straight line is going to be extremely exaggerated in terms of appearance. And that's where it comes back to our sense that sensitive infrastructure is supported by the planning board will go a heck of a long way towards minimizing the visual impact of this development. And the question of slope, we've taken our numbers from a Mass Highway Department study. And it might be interesting for the town's Department of Public Works to review the state's, the Commonwealth's, study that indicates that the road grade is appropriate based on the speed.
I'd certainly discuss it with them.
I mean, that's a...
Where is, where is the, where is the slope recommendation that the Commonwealth has set in the building code and what?
I don't have the report with me. It was referenced in the document I left, but I have here, give me just a moment.
You can email the reference to Mr. Thor. You've got it.
Here it is. Thank you. Massachusetts Highway Department, 2006 Project Development and Design Guide offers the following recommendations for grade of subdivision roads with rolling terrain. I think we meet that criteria. What they've done is looked at speed and then a grade related to the speed. Now, on this road, I think it would be difficult to get up to 20 miles an hour, even if you tried based on the short distance. But at 20 miles an hour, they allow a grade or recommend a grade of 12 or allow a grade of 12. 25 miles an hour, 12. 30 miles an hour, 11. Now, in what they describe as rural, natural, rural, developed, and suburban low-intensity areas, you'll have to excuse me, I don't know the fine distinction between these, a 20 mile an hour road is a 10% grade. And then they get into local roads, rural, natural, rural, developed, suburban, low-intensity areas. Percent grade for selected design speed, 15 miles an hour, 12% grade, 20 miles an hour, an 11% grade, 25 miles an hour, an 11% grade, up to 30 miles an hour at a 10% grade. So, we're talking about a road that'll pass two houses, basically. You're not going to be reaching speeds of 30 miles an hour. I don't know what the towns would set the speed limit on this, basically, way or lane. But it certainly appears to me, if we go to the Massachusetts Highway Department, can I, I can get you a copy of that. I mean, certainly it would appear to me that the slope that exists there, the one that's designed by Olmstead and is critical as part of the landscape, it falls well within the guidelines established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the other thing is when you start cutting into the slope, you're destroying the roots of trees and you're creating the requirement of walls. And everything, and that's what we've been looking at, is all of these things create unnecessary hardscape and visual, basically eyesores.
So, we're going to need to know what the DPW thinks. And we will make sure they get those guidelines. It seems to make sense that the Commonwealth thinks that you can do 12%. The DPW might, might defer. We'll see. Because I don't know that we have, if anyone on the board has a deeply held feeling about 12 or 10.
I do.
Which do you prefer?
I think the DPW's concern and, you know, one of the main ones on a road of this nature is plowing. And in the wintertime, people trying to climb up a steep slope and the danger of trying to plow down a steep, the difficulty of pushing snow uphill and the danger of pushing it. And I think that has a lot to do with their, with their concerns. I certainly am, you know, not going to argue with them between 10 and 11. I think 11%, if, if that helps, you know, reduce the cuts, I think it could be considered. But I've never plowed in snow and I'm sure that that's a big part of their concern. One of the issues with the steepness is Alex talked about the washouts on the side of Hillside Street. But when this water's running down a steep hill like that, it really does scour. So, I do think that some kind of curbing is necessary, although I understand the concern with the rural nature. And I think, you know, a slope granite curb maybe is a compromise between that. That allows the water to stay on the road surface so it can get to the catch bases and it won't scour off the sides, which certainly on a steep slope like this. The aesthetic character, I agree with you that, you know, not having curbs, but I think some curbing's necessary for drainage.
I can provide a photograph of a development at the Long Year Estate in Brookline that has a number of units, more than 100, I believe. And they used the slope granite. This was the fallback position. Didn't want to bring it up right away in case you agree to have no curbing. They used, and I have the photograph of it that I'd have you, one piece of granite block. And it seemed to serve the purpose there fairly well. It's a multi-million dollar per unit development and was, went through strict scrutiny and visually it's less, has again, less impact, the better. And apparently it works there and I'd be happy to drop a photograph of that road off.
And it's also very expensive to build and to maintain, but, you know, it is beautiful. And that was in Olmstead Detail, the slope granite edging on the, on the side, but that's difficult. Is it intended that this will be accepted as a public road or is it going to be a private road?
It would be accepted as a public road.
Okay, that makes a lot of difference, I think, to design criteria.
Right. Also, John Manson, in his recommendation, the retention of the existing wall on Brushhill Road, the developer is committed to retain the existing wall. And where it is necessary to remove a part of that wall will be relocated so that the existing wall will be retained on Brushhill Road. I think that's important to the overall view and entranceway coming in. And it's something that has been there for probably 200 years and would like it to stay.
Just to clarify, our position is that the wall remain exactly as it is and that the entrance to the driveway become the entrance to the roadway. It's sufficiently wide at that point to meet either the 20 or the 18-foot width of the road in order that the trees at the beginning of the driveway, approximately 60 feet up, are maintained, providing further blockage of the development from the road. I don't know what the logistical problems are in maintaining the existing entrance, but...
Well, there are sightlines.
There are, the existing drive comes in at an angle. We're proposing to kind of bring it in a little bit more perpendicular.
Yeah, we like the angle a little better rather than that straight line view up the hill. Not to let the snowplows skid into softer area.
If we were going to use the existing...
Having lived in Vermont, I guess I'm used to these kind of roads that go up like this and the snowplows don't come out. I think it, I don't know how Anthony feels about it. We walked the site to discuss a specific issue and we don't have a permit one way or another, but the width there is sufficient. There are significant trees to the left of the existing driveway entrance that would come out if the road was shifted. And frankly, if I might, excuse me.
If the driveway does come in here, where the existing, where the roadway comes in, where the existing wall is, I think you have not only a better aesthetic entrance, you maintain significant trees in this area and create something that's a straight sightline up from Brushhill Road, which has always been a problem.
The abutters, not in the development, do have access to that road.
That I'm not able to address, but...
Well, I mean, if you shift it over, that becomes...
If you shift it over, it's going to be just be further, the easement itself that we created for the roadway to, for the drive to exist would just be enlarged. But at the same time, you know, if you, if it's the left that we're worried about, the sidewalk itself, if that's eliminated, that's only going to kind of fit it further away from those existing trees that the Commonwealth's pointing out. The left side of the access road, we're not proposing to touch. In fact, you know, the, the drive itself is further to the right to that existing home. So, the, the wall that we'll be looking to cut and to relocate, basically, you take that wall and, and kind of swing it around as a return to follow, follow the curvature of, of the road.
If you face the driveway from Brushhill Road, is it the right-hand side or the left-hand side you're proposing to cut?
The right-hand side.
Okay.
So, it...
There are two, two huge sugar maples that are very close on that side. I don't know if your plan would endanger those or not. They're probably the most important trees.
John, you can see how these stone walls kind of bear up and, and over in here as well, you can kind of see that the existing cut is right here.
Yep.
And so, what we're doing, and here's, here's the actual right-hand return. So, what we're doing is just swinging it back.
I say, I suggest then, if you do that, you're taking those two sugar maple trees out, which I think is, is a shame because they are actually extremely old and were part of the Olmstead design. And I think it's unnecessary, particularly if it's only being done to straighten the road. I think you have a better development, a more aesthetically pleasing development for not only the people that live in the development, but for the neighbors if you don't, for the sake of a straighter road, cut down two ancient trees and adjust the existing wall as it meets Brushhill Road. It's one of the things that we've considered extremely important. I think that other cluster of trees is on the left side of the road there.
Yep, that's considered cedar trees.
It's going to be a pick. I mean, we'll look at either way, how we can work it, but I'm sure at some point, one clusters will have to be affected, whether it be the sugar maple or those ones that we look at on the left.
Again, that's another reason for an 18-foot wide road. To compromise on the hardscape to preserve the landscape is not a bad goal.
And I return any sugar maple.
But one thing I will say, when we've asked Anthony to look at things with us, he does. I'm sure we can go over to the site again and look at it and see if that could change.
Well, gentle curves in roads are, are nice things, but, you know, they can, they can get too pronounced, especially at intersections. So, it's, look at it, but, I mean, we're going to, we're going to want to hear what the developer thinks about your thought.
Just so you'll know, what we're proposing is the driveway as it exists today for 60 feet, not asking it to be curved any more than it is, as it is today and has been for 100 years. Not a major shift, but just to use the existing footprint of the driveway for the first 60 feet.
Well, I've been, take a look at it. I'll do the sightlines and see what, what that right, you've got a response already.
Well, I have looked at trying to maintain the existing drive as much as possible. And if you use the existing curb cut, the road itself falls completely out of the right of way. Now, we are creating an access and utility easement for that specific purpose. So, it's just a matter of changing the easement to bring it all the way down to Brushhill Road and you can maintain the driveway location. The, the angle is my biggest concern. I would want to find some way to come in perpendicular to Brushhill Road.
I mean, that is a, that is...
Is the existing driveway on this map?
It is not, but you can get the...
I mean, I think you'll see if you overlay the existing driveway to this driveway, we're talking about 20 feet, 20 feet maybe moves over, not a dramatic shift in the angle. We're, we're looking at saying to about here, keep this, that be, that be the...
That's easy to get.
...curb and then begin to go up rather than running over here, taking the sugar This is the existing and I think what you're proposing is something more along the lines of this.
If you take, like I said, you know, here's, here's the, here's the stone wall return?
No, if I could put this here so we can...
No, no, no. But here's, here's the common, commonality and you kind of get a feel for it. That's right here. And then this return here, you can see this stone wall here, that's right here. So, this drive comes in exactly right there. And it goes...
And it comes in and it goes like that to this one.
Correct.
This one here, right. And then you borrow that. And we're, we're talking about plus or minus 60 feet of the existing street to, which then has it go back connecting into here, the large evergreens to here and here and the sugar maples that are here that have got to be a couple, 100 years old or more are preserved so that when you're standing here, there's a real buffer on both sides. And it may be easier to sort of go up like this, but you're, you know, as, as we've walked this property several times, maintaining what has been there for all these years and then we'll, we'll lose the Olmstead driveway by and large anyway. But simply by allowing this curve to may be maintained and then shifting up the hill, you save significant trees on either side. And you also don't allow the straight sightline of asphalt as you're on Brushhill Road. It gives it a little bit of a buffer of a large tree.
Well, I guess in response, I think what I would like to do is, is get a hard location of those existing trees.
Happy to meet you over there with Tim Kernan.
Sure.
Can you split the difference? I mean, I'm looking at this and I'm looking at this.
I think it's all going to jive with regards to where the, where the trees are.
Right.
I mean, here you are, I mean, I still have to meet this grade. I mean, I'm at one end of here and this front wall, I want to say is 202. So, I mean, I have, just, you know, to meet that, I have some cut to do. So, it...
If a tree's sitting right here...
I don't think there's much we can do.
But if the tree is sitting here...
Right.
Can you move over to here?
Sure. Here we can actually maybe reduce the pavement, get rid of a sidewalk.
I mean, I, I think the fact that the sidewalks go to a street without sidewalks makes no sense to me.
I'd have to say I'm with him on that one.
Well, that's, I mean, there are a number of ways of looking at it. And one is of course not requiring a paved sidewalk, but the stone dust. And I mean, there are a number of options.
We can look at the options. I will say though, if we're going to be talking to the DPW about the grade and, and changes in the road direction and width, we also should check with the Fire Department, make sure the engines can get up.
Yeah, as Mrs. Carr pointed out at one point, they certainly managed to get up here when the house burnt recently.
They did, but now you've got this return drive going on. You want to make sure that with 18 feet, I was waiting for somebody to say that.
It was such a great line when she used it, I had to steal it and use it again.
But yeah, we should just double check.
And we're happy to meet with the... And we're happy to meet with the development team, with the DPW, to show them our information and concerns.
Excellent, that's great.
Jim, you did talk about going out and try to locate more specifically those trees. I think in general, the base plan doesn't identify enough significant trees out there, it really only identifies three trees, and I would say that there's more trees out there than that.
Looking at Mr. McDonald's letter, I'm sure at the same time, we probably can flag some trees that would allow my crew to go out there.
Yeah.
If necessary, to field locate them, if I can just draft them on the plan in the field myself, I certainly can do that.
I think there's more there that should be identified on the plan.
There absolutely, there absolutely are, and Anthony, I think, is aware of that, it just might not have, at this early stage, been communicated back and forth, and Tim Kernan and I have volunteered to accompany whoever wants to flag the trees. And we're not intending on being overly aggressive in this, it's just, the reality of it is that if some, certain trees are preserved, the value of the property's increased, and it protects the neighborhood, and there are some significant specimen trees beyond the one that we keep talking about, and I said, we're happy to go out and walk the land now that it's not three feet of snow there, and do some, make some suggestions.
Now, Bill, were the streetlights at Fletcher Steel Drive the ones with the expensive bulbs?
Yes.
That's, why don't you tell us that story?
I don't know the whole story, I just know that you don't want to do those again. You're going to pick streetlights that are similar to what we already have, not a different bulb that we don't have.
Those as crazy light bulbs like the new cars are putting in, super bright?
No.
I mean, it seems to me that the light posts on Low Circle are the same design as the light posts on Fletcher Steel Way, but the bulbs are different?
Luckily, the lights at Low Circle are paid for by the homeowner association, not by the town. So if you want to have a private day, you-
No, I mean, I would think they must get a chuckle, as they pay their $3 for rubbish in their tax bill and don't get plowed and don't pay for their streetlights, but that's another thing. But the style of the light seems to be the same as Fletcher Steel, you know, sort of an acorn on the top as a black pole, just more historic than the ones that come out of a telephone pole, like along Brush Hill.
I understand, but we're going to want to get a cost-effective light.
Yeah, and I think the dinner is better.
And the Fletcher Steel lights are not cost-effective.
Oh, just to be clear, I'm not recommending the light bulbs of Fletcher Steel.
They only take one type of light bulb.
Then we're recommending what's it, the other development.
You're looking for the period lights, not for the corporate lights.
Yeah, you know the ones, I mean, the acorn top.
But if we can make sure that the light pollution is minimized, that'd be good. So, no extra spillage.
So Bill-
So they're not going up into the sky.
Dark skies.
Shoebox.
Definitely dark skies.
Shoebox, right?
Yeah, shoebox.
So during the, the snow this winter was the roadway-
Effective shoebox, but not shoebox.
-plowed all the time.
Brush Hill?
No, the driveway.
It seemed to be. It always seemed to be plowed, yeah.
Anybody take measurements of what the, which was, the snowbank, the snowbank?
Was who?
Was who what?
Was what plowed?
The driveway.
This driveway. The Palans live there, so I'm sure they're getting in and out.
Can anybody take measurements of the snowbanks, of the width, the snowbank, the snowbank?
Oh, the width of the road, you mean, no.
Plowed width, the plowed width, yeah.
Plowed width, no, I didn't.
If you measure my street, it's 10 feet.
Your street is 10 feet? Mine's about 10 feet. So, my point being, if the plow is coming up, which is about maybe 10 feet wide, eight feet to 10 feet wide, plow's coming up, locating, it can come down with the 18 feet.
Oh, you mean if they don't plow to the edges?
Yeah, if they don't plow to the edges.
But I think it's a situation.
Yeah, I know now Brush Hill Road is plowed pretty much to the edges, and the other public streets. I think, in this case, the experience that we, what's happened in the last year is you have a single homeowner that was plowing sufficient to get up to their house. It's like when I climb, when a driveway is plowed, there's a house beyond ours, they came in with about a boxcar width, so that you're basically getting through the width of a car. But I, I think with 18 feet, a car is five and a half, six foot wide, 12 feet for two, won't be parking on the street, I can't imagine with the driveways and garages that we're gonna have here.
Well, I think we may be doing a little more research about that, a little more research about the width, the plowed width, what, especially with this winter as an example.
Right.
You're really, really stretched, getting down off and narrow, I think. With the plows going up and cars coming down.
No, I would, not that I would be sure, but I expect it would be like other streets, private ways, and streets in town, Lower State, Brush Hill Lane, and the public streets, Brush Hill Road, Fairmont Bradley, that the plows this year did a great job and really did go to the edge to the extent possible. I mean, we had pretty much full width, actually, Tim and I were up in the middle of the road this evening just to double check on some measurements with the snow, and they were, even though we've had some melting, they were the full width of the road as we had measured without the snow. So the town's done a great job in keeping them wide. But I hear what you're saying.
I have questions on three of your proposals, just to see what you think of them, and it may be that you've gotten these so recently, you don't have an opinion, so feel free to say that. The first is the elimination of the right-of-ways to Brush Hill Lane and Hyde Park, is this something that you would be willing to consider?
It would be, it would be our plan to eliminate them, yes.
All right, and then the-
May I just ask a question? When you say eliminate, you mean have the deed changed to get rid of those?
Yes. Well, we would eliminate our right to-
To use those for access. I don't know if the fire department would have concern about that.
You'd have to sell the Boston one.
Ban the easements. I don't know if the fire department would have problems with that.
The Boston one?
That's a chunk of land.
With a 500-foot road-
What I, no, what I'm talking about is the right-of-way to Brush Hill Lane. I'm not sure about the Boston one.
Whose benefit is that right-of-way fall? You're eliminating-
There are great old stories of why those right-of-ways existed, involving state police and other people that visited way back.
There was, yes, the property has an interesting history.
Could you explain that further, Mr. White?
Turn the camera directly on you to explain it.
All right, we'll leave that to the historians with the-
Like the pirates?
All the details.
The other two questions were under the section on design review, first of all, the idea of a voluntary design review, and second of all, looking at where the buildings would be sited. Do you have any comments on those proposals?
Yeah, we put in those buffers specifically to be a no-touch and a no-build, and those are the envelopes. Now, there'd also be additional restrictions regarding sideline, you know, and how far from the, from the street, et cetera, frontage.
But building envelopes is usually something even more restricted than that.
Right, and what we're, what we're doing is we're restricting the rear portion so that it will not be as close to the Brush Hill Lane homes as could be legally possible in Milton. We're making that a no-build area, and we'll also put that in the, in the deed for the, for the transfer, to make sure that it's a permanent restriction.
And just to clarify from our position and perspective, as Mr. Whiteside pointed out, the definition that we're using of the building envelope is more in line with what he just suggested, that even where the houses are sited on this map now could be considered an appropriate envelope, but with even the 40-foot setback, you could have a house here, not that I can imagine anyone doing it, but I've seen it in some of the developments we've visited, and that goes back to the problem with 40,000 square foot lots with 10-foot, 15-foot setbacks and 30-foot setbacks. We'd really like to see a commitment to a true building envelope that's marked on the plans, that would give potential buyers some guidance on where they put their house if they're too stupid to realize that they don't want to be sitting on a lot line, some direction from the development team probably wouldn't be the worst thing in the world. Our fear is that we have buildings that, for some reason, someone decides they want a front lawn going from as far as they can, to 40 feet off of a butter, you have a wall, you know, 25-foot high with 35-foot peak on a, on a building. I can't imagine anyone wanting to do it, but-
Would you have the building envelopes restricted to the main building, or would you include accessory buildings within the building envelopes? For example, if they wanted a gazebo or something like that, or whatever. Just coming up with an accessory building.
No, you're right, I think it's primarily, really, it's the main building, so that there's not this mass stuck, like Enid Chapman's, well, the lady Enid Chapman, unfortunately, is here. If you had a building here, that this part of the land is much higher than this, it really would overwhelm not only the Brush Hill viewed aspect, but her home, and as well as the Doherty's house or something here, so I think the auxiliary buildings wouldn't be as much of a concern, it's just this massive 4,500 square foot, potentially 40 feet from the law.
Okay, so that's something we'd want to further discuss with you, is whether you are interested or not in defining building envelopes, from your perspective, as proposed from the neighborhood perspective. And the last thing is a voluntary design review. Do you have any comments on that at the moment? Or is that something you want to think about further?
We plan to have these architecturally reasonable, we do not plan to have negotiations on the, on the detailed plans of, you know, of each house. In other words, the buyer of the house will have a certain amount of say, and he does not need to get a majority vote. However, we plan to have these architecturally consistent with the, with the neighborhood. I'm not a big fan of site plan review.
Really? You've got any more built-in law or so?
And I would, I would hate to extend that to every residential home in Milton or every new home in Milton.
Well, it would be, it would, it would be voluntary, because, of course, there's no legal basis to do it without a historic district, and-
Well, this is the, we do have historic district, but there's no teeth in any of the districts.
Right, it isn't, it isn't the sort of Back Bay, Beacon Hill-type district, where there's teeth, as you said.
I have a question for John, if, I don't know if you can answer it, but during your opening remarks, you said that you were talking about a sixth house subject to negotiations?
Oh, that was a sort of a passing reference to the house that exists already.
The one on my floor?
Down on the right.
Oh, okay, the house that's almost built, okay. But it's interesting, subject to negotiations.
As to whether or not they're allowed to go onto the driveway?
Oh, that's what I was saying.
Right, is that what you meant?
I now remember the context, it was five houses on the road.
Right.
Possibly six, subject to negotiation, there's more coming.
Oh, so you are talking to that guy?
Well, it's going to be, I mean, he's got the right of access, because he is going to be abutting that roadway, and so he's going to have a right to tie into it, and that's the way it is.
Yep.
And that's the way it should be.
Eventually, eventually the roadway, if he's accepted by the town, and he'll have every right to town.
If he's abutting the roadway to a public street, he has the right to curtail.
He's got the right-
As simple as that.
He's got Brush Hill Road.
I understand, so he'll have two roads, because he'll be on a corner, and we're going to encourage him to use-
So there's not more than one opening in the road?
We don't want, we don't want the Brush Hill, we prefer not, we prefer that it opened onto this, and hopefully up-
Can you tell how the negotiations are going, it's a public, I don't see the, I don't see the guy here.
Oh, he's in.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, okay. Maybe he'll talk us on.
John, shut the-
Anything to avoid answering that question? We haven't taken a, you know, a position, I assume, as Mr. Whiteside suggested at the last meeting, that that was something to be negotiated between the two parties and reach an agreement as to what is appropriate.
Other questions for the board?
I'd like to know if anybody else would like to speak to us as well.
Well, I do.
I certainly appreciate your hard work at saying this is a thing you know.
This is wonderful, that was a lot of work, and it was good.
A group effort, I will say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Who else wants to speak? Mr. Kernan?
I have an original copy for the distinguished chair and the rest are, what copies?
The rest aren't as distinguished, I guess.
We get the blaster copies.
I'll have to have that in file, right?
With the original copy? I want a train.
Alex wants his original copy.
It's not in the budget.
Tim Kernan, 642 Brush Hill Road. Keith Carlson, who lives on Brush Hill Lane, is not able to make it tonight, and asked me if I would read this on his behalf, so I will proceed. The planning board requested that the neighbors of the Boyle Estate on Brush Hill Road provide their own plan as an alternative to that of the potential developer. This certainly implied that something could come of it. I, Keith, developed and presented one at the November 18th meeting, a plan that seemed to be received with interest by several board members. The board asked that we come back with cost and after-tax comparisons of the two plans, and asked the same of the potential developer. I obtained the services of a well-qualified architect and planning board member of his own community, and of a well-qualified builder, negotiated fees, solicited funds from the neighbors. These were collected and attempts were made to gain access to the house. All of these failed, and attempts, and appeals to the planning board and historic board to allow inspection of the house with liability waivers provided were turned down. Clearly, without inspection of the house, no determination of costs or competitive plans could be made. Therefore, we cannot come back with them as requested. This has, of course, been very disappointing. However, the knowledge gained through the process, that had we been allowed to approximate the necessary, appropriate the necessary access, and we were shown a favorable comparison of the net resulting from the unique tax situation, no effect on the outcome would have been achieved is far worse. The town has not empowered itself to safeguard its heritage or to look after the interests of its residents. The only solve for those who lose in a situation such as this is to try to avoid repetition, to try to help others in a similar situation in the future. Protecting some of the heritage properties of the town, isolating some houses from demolition, increasing the minimum lot size that has been subdivided, are some of the goals towards which we now work. Regrettably, however, among the discouraging comments that I've received among this obvious next course, is that of a town official who said, "It will never happen, a lot of builders live in Milton." I have nothing against the prospective developer, I do not know him, he is only doing what he is allowed. I am very, very disappointed in the town that tolerates the destruction in appearance and enjoyment of the neighborhood, and the destruction of the property values of dozens, scores of residents, and forfeits part of its history, heritage, and character for the profit of one or a few. Keith Carlson. Thank you. I too was a part of that process, and I sort of echoed Keith's frustration, I went to the planning board, who had issued a cease and desist order for anybody to access the building.
The building inspector issued that, the planning board has no authority to access, to provide access to buildings.
That's right.
It does not, and the historical board commission also has no, I mean, your fight was with the building commissioner?
That's correct.
And, you know, apparently, the building is not safe.
Well, the fight is with the process, and I think we just bring it to your attention to highlight the fact that here was a building that we were attempting to figure out some alternatives for, and we were thwarted all the way through. You know, we appreciated the support that- You know, we appreciated the support that everybody gave us in attempting to try to make something of it. Unfortunately, it just didn't happen, and it was unfortunate. As I said, we did have a number of people that were willing to help us come up with an alternative, and it just couldn't, didn't happen. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question, and actually, it's for the developers. Bob, you suggested that you looked into the cost of rehabilitation and that it was going to be, you know, required development. That was millions of dollars, and it was too costly and to make a marketable building. Do you have some figures or any work that was done by an architect or something to evaluate that building?
No, I have a 40-page report that I submitted to the board just some months ago from real estate people.
Do you have a 40-page report?
No.
You were in Italy, I think, on vacation. No, seriously.
There was an analysis that we received.
There was a complete analysis. In fact, I think there were two separate analyses provided to the board from two different real estate firms.
Okay. I'll look into, I'll look at that. Yeah, because I, you know...
Have you a copy of the...
Yeah, well, Stilce might have it, and we'll have it as part of the record, I'm sure. I am also, you know, concerned and disappointed that when the historic commission put a moratorium on this, a 90-day demolition delay or whatever it is, nine-month demolition delay, and we asked that, you know, you go back and work seriously with the neighbors, and there was discussion with the neighbors. But other than the buffer, the addition of a no-touch buffer, I compared this plan to the plan we saw in August, and it's exactly the same. And I don't think there was a redesign of the lot layouts or that there really was a change in what was being proposed based on this negotiation, so, you know, it leads me to believe that there wasn't really a good-faith effort to try to come up with a plan that could...
Do you have any kind of data?
Yeah, well, we'll get to that. We've got questions on those.
A number of items.
And the process started in April and not August?
Yeah, I just had a plan here that I looked at, and that was dated, you know, and but that was before it came, you know, to us, and we asked you to go back and look more closely. I mean, I really had hopes that there would be, and maybe there was, and I missed it somewhere, but, you know, a serious look at trying to preserve either or both of those buildings as part of the subdivision design. And my understanding is that people were in the old building prior to the building inspector saying he didn't want anybody in there and indicated that it was really a corner of the building that was damaged, and most of it, you know, wasn't so damaged. So that leads me to believe that there probably were restoration options, and the fact that, you know, we haven't been presented something like that as a comparison, and then, you know, it just seems that an opportunity to seriously consider trying to save this building or the carriage house, you know, really wasn't made. Now, how much we can do about that, I'm not really sure, but I'm disappointing, disappointed that we're looking at the same plan that we've seen before, after, you know, really we did try. And I know that part of the difficulty was that each neighbor had a different opinion about, you know, what would be acceptable, because by putting development in one part, it impacted some neighbors more than it impacted others. And I think the overall consensus was a five-lot, relatively traditional subdivision is probably the only way to go, but I would have liked to see some preservation alternatives, which haven't happened.
I will go ahead and email you a copy of the report I submitted.
Yeah, I did do some traveling last fall, and it's possible that I missed that.
And the other thing is, I would say that I've worked, and I use here, with several neighborhood groups in Milton, and I would say that this was particularly successful insofar as the neighborhood was very expressive and interested, the developer was very receptive to hearing about it, and numerous changes were made to the, to the plan based on the neighbor's input. And if you looked at the report that John McDonald just gave you, 90% of it is either already incorporated or something that was agreeable. I think that's phenomenal, and I think that is a very successful negotiation process and will result in a better development here.
Well, I do agree that, you know, Mr. McDonald did recognize how willing you were to talk and to consider things. A lot of their suggestions in here aren't yet part of the plan, and maybe they will be incorporated into conditions that the planning board looks at. So, you know, for a traditional five-lot standard subdivision, I think this is, you know, getting better. But I continue to think that there wasn't a significant effort to look at preservation alternatives, and I think the town's poor for that. But, you know, there's only so much that we can do, so we'll continue to discuss.
Who else wants to be heard? No one else wants to be heard, but we are going to still continue this hearing.
Can I listen to you, Brian?
No, no, no one listens.
And...
Let that happen to him, okay?
At the request of the building.
When are we, what is our timeline again, Bill?
We're doing nothing on the 10th.
Ninety days from...
Yeah, we've got plenty of time on the 10th.
The 10th, we've got plenty of time on the 10th.
We're going to West End Court.
We've got 90 days from when?
Oh, I...
The date it was filed, or it's...
90 days from when, Mr. Shabill?
January 13th.
January, February 13th, March 13th. So we've got, we've got some, we've got some time, but we may, we may get an extension yet. We'll see.
So when are we continuing this, too?
Do you want to meet on the 10th? Or do you want to do it on the 3rd? What are we doing on the 3rd?
We've got a lot on the 3rd.
Should we spend a few minutes now and wrap it up?
No, I don't think so. We want to hear from the DPW.
Okay.
Add the fire department.
Add the fire chief.
And probably the police chief as well.
I'll get the extension now, though.
And we want to get, well, I think that we can, we can, we can show them at our next meeting that we're close, if we are close.
We have three options. We can either load up on the 3rd, we can meet on the 10th, or we can push it out on the 24th.
Let's do it on the 10th.
Okay, 10th. At 6:45?
Is that all right with you? At 6:45.
6:45.
And then, the 10th? At 6:45?
March 10th.
And go through this, and...
Do you all want to do it on the 3rd?
What are we doing on the 3rd?
131 Elliott. What else? We've got two. 17 Canton Ave.
17 will be...
17 Canton Ave.
Is 17 going to be continued?
A thought of appeals, you mean?
Are you going to be ready for the, for the 3rd? I think what we need to do is, you know, talk to DPW and talk to fire, all of which can be done in a day.
Address this stuff.
And then the meeting with Mr. McDonald.
Right.
To fly some trees and get them on the plan.
Before we close, then, if I may, I've got some questions, yeah, continue. I've got some questions, and I won't be here on the 10th, so one thing that really jumps out at me that I'd like to hear response to, we've changed...
We're going to do it on the 3rd, Pete.
Do not, I'm sorry?
We can't do without you.
We have to have you here. I'll do it on the 3rd.
Okay, I'm going to ask this question anyway. The drainage concept has changed from an open detention basin to these infiltration tanks. But your report says that the soils won't infiltrate, and you say, and it says that that's the reason you can't go to septic, and you're proposing sewer because the soils won't infiltrate the liquid, but yet you're going to a drainage solution that depends on infiltration, and if it overcharges, then that water's just going to charge down to the system anyway.
The system is designed to use the soils to the maximum extent it can.
Right.
In the sense that it's going to fill the system in, it has an open bottom, and it's going to recharge the maximum amount allowed by nature.
Right, which the soils won't recharge.
But at that point, there is a down, a release, a pipe that allows...
An overflow.
...drain.
Right.
And ties into a drain line that runs down to the center of the street. Now, that steps down all the way through, so it's more of an underground detention basin than a retention basin. So it operates with recharge capabilities, but totally drains dry.
And as you recall, the proposal was to have this area here...
Right. No, I understand that.
Like a detention basin.
Right, I understand that. And I understand the reasons for that, but at the same time, the report says the soils won't drain. So really, that means is we're not going to get the stormwater detention that's required by law. What it's going to do is it's overflow into our system.
It exceeds Stormwater Management Act requirements.
But we have to, we have to, if...
Talk to DPW.
Bill, if DPW can't do it, we'll hire someone. I mean, DPW has to be satisfied with these drainage calculations, and we want, we want them to advise us in writing that...
If we hire somebody, what's his nickname going to be?
What?
If we hire someone, what's his nickname?
We're not even going to go there.
Quick, 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 does that, huh?
Thanks.
I'll sit down, run for...
Yeah, it's, I don't have that expertise. It just struck me, I think, that DPW is the one to make that determination.
I think that we'll do this, what is, it's going to be a late night on the 3rd, because 17 Canton Ave is when?
8:00.
Oh, gosh. So what time do we put these guys on for?
We could go on March 24th.
We could do till March 24th. I've given them plenty of time, but does that start running too close to our 90-day deadline?
No, because then we ask them to give us additional time.
Which I'm sure they will do.
We don't think that having you hang around on the 3rd will possibly all hours. It depends on 17 Central Ave. If you're really ready to go, then it's...
17 Canton.
It's 17 Canton Ave. It shapes up to be a possibly long evening, but if you're, you know, if it's obviously have to...
I have great pleasure in meeting with the board extensively.
Anytime.
All right.
Anthony is not available after 15, so we won't...
Okay, so you want to do it on the 3rd?
Oh, yes.
At 9:00?
Fine.
PM.
Well, we'll make it, we'll make it.
Can we do it at least at 8:30?
We'll make it 8:30.
It's a little late for the residents.
Because if, if we advertise or continue, we continue to that time, and then Canton Ave doesn't come in, then we're sitting for two hours. So why don't we schedule them close enough together that if...
Like 8:15?
Yeah, 8:15, I think that matters.
Exactly.
All right, now, you've got a point, that Canton Ave, I have a feeling...
Because I don't think, I don't think Canton Ave will be here.
I don't think they'll be totally ready.
Yeah.
But we'll see.
Yep.
Surprises are good things. Okay.
Why are we always being expectantly over here? Are we ready?
We're ready to, we're ready to, yes, Eddie. We're ready to continue this until the 3rd at 8:15. So continue.
Excellent, which means there's just one item left on the agenda. Eddie, would you like to do number seven, or shall I?
New business I'd like to do.
Oh, you have new business, okay.
Bill, how about this convention coming to Boston? Should we start to try to attend one or more of the events, or should the chairman attend though? How would you recommend proceedings?
We missed the cheap date. We had to have registered by 14th, I think, to get the cheap prices, because I looked at it.
For the APA conference?
APA conference. It's about $800, $900 now. Yeah.
So we'll all go.
Ask Kevin, tell Kevin we want $4,500.
Watch the poor guy faint.
See, we'll see if we can get the chairman of any of us to go in.
Because I looked at paying it out of my own pocket, and then I had a look at all the different things that were there, and there just wasn't quite enough. I needed bigger pockets to justify it, yeah.
You can buy, you can buy access to the individual workshops, though.
That's true, you can do that, so it's an idea.
And they are, they are helpful. You do meet people from all over the country.
See if the gov can get us some seats, opening events or whatever.
I would suggest going to the Citizen Drain, CTPS.
Yeah, I'm definitely doing that.
Those are good.
Is that still in our budget? Did we take that out of our budget?
No, we have that in the budget.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All right, now we will entertain a motion. Yes.
I'll second his motion.
All right, along favor. We're adjourned.